All this meeting, the owner please. We'll open this meeting with prayer and trustee D. would you say your invocation please?
Everyone, Father, we thank you for this day, the blessings of life, Father that you give so abundantly, as we would never take those for granted. Father, as we go about the college's business this evening, would you give us wisdom or beyond what we might possess, that, Father, that we would seek what's in the best interest of those that we represent, the students, faculty, give us wisdom beyond our measure. Go with us through the remainder of this meeting, we ask these things, in your son's name, amen.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments tonight? Seeing and hearing none, Dr. Morrison?
All right. Give you some updates from our last, since our last meeting, really kind of since our last two meetings. With our last meeting, we had, we had our students come in and kind of talk about some of their successes and some of the things that they're doing and stuff. So we're just going to give you a quick rundown of, a little shout out to our alignment program. You know, we had some storms go through and there was a lot of talk about linemen and the service they do for our communities. Here's this kind of a snapshot of some of our graduates out of our Palestine program that are, you know, getting jobs before they done or finished with school. We're seeing some good growth in that lineman programs. I want to give a shout out to some of our alumni, Sam Pollak here. He's pursuing his dual master's degree in sacrifice home performance and multiple woodwinds at Oklahoma City University. He's a graduate of TVCC. So it doesn't matter where you start, it's kind of where you end up. Another graduate of ours is Sarah Rodriguez. She is a professor of engineering education at Virginia Tech University. And then we want to give a shout out to Kayden, who graduated last year. He won a buckle at the college finals rodeo, college national final rodeo. Unfortunately, he was with Texas A&amp;M Commerce. But we're proud of Kayden and how he represented TVC last year and still represents TVCC. A little kind of recap on some of our athletics. We want to talk about softball. Softball season wrapped up since our last meeting. We had six players that made all region conference North Zone. And we also had the player of the year with Addison Wittrum. Addison not only won Player of the Year, but Addison won a Go Glove. She was a second team All-American and she's a freshman and she'll be back next year. For some more information about our program, they finished with their best season ever at a 45 and 16 season. And we learned Friday, or I learned Friday while helping Ed Ratliff paint the dugouts at the softball field that Maria, Coach Maria Nguyen received in the mail the awards for the kids. Well, in that award was her Coach of the Year award. They didn't notify her. So congratulations to Coach Nguyen Ratliff and her recognition as Coach of the Year for our region and the best season ever for Trinity Valley University. And she's got some really high hopes, especially with the returners. She has returning back under the leadership with Addison returning as Player of the Year. So look forward to next year's season. It's, oh, there we go. Also during that time, I don't remember if I recognized, but during the season, Coach Nguyen also won her eight hundredth win. That was on April 17th against Alvin, nine to one. She's doing great. But sometimes we want to focus on something other than just athletics. Our softball team, women will be recognized with a 3.82 GPA, which is actually higher than last year's GPA when they were recognized as the top GPA in the country. So congratulations to those girls. Our esports team is, had a very successful year. They finished second in Rainbow Siege, fourth in Call of Duty. They're getting closer and closer to that national title for esports. I need to make a correction. When the SGA was here last time, we talked about their seventeen titles, state titles for the Student Government Association. When cleaning out the closet, we actually found two more. They've won nineteen state titles in the state of Texas for the Student Government Association. I'm preparing for my next career. I know my rodeo fans in the house will glad to see this, but I'm preparing for my next career as a bull rider. So wish me luck on that.
You guys, that's not a bull.
Okay, maybe it's a bronc, I don't remember. Sorry, bronch rider. I was told I was right size for both. Having a little fun with the kids during, oh, during one of our student days. Deanna Frey, one of our art teachers, she's been, having some of her artwork being displayed at Artscape in Dallas and also at TJC Rogers Nursing and HSC building. She's a very talented young lady and it's great to see her artwork highlighted. This is Audrey Jeans during our art show held by September Kirk. This is a work that I purchased from the art show. It's auctioned, wonderful little piece of two cardinal birds. We have some really talented students. So if you ever get a chance to be on campus when we're having our art show, you need to check it out. And many of the pieces are available for auction. We want to give a recognition to Brandon Coleman. He was the sixty-seventh pick in the NFL Draft. He played here at Trinity Valley, then went on to TCU. So congratulations to Brandon Coleman. Our volleyball team, they posted a 3.905 GPA for academic honors. And I believe every member of the team was recognized as an academic All-American. So Aleah does a wonderful job and not only smart, but the, finished in the top four and the final four at the national tournaments. Here's just a picture of our spring athletes that graduated. They were able this year to wear a stole, recognizing them as a student athlete. Our Cardinal Singers, I just want to throw this because I'm so proud of what Dr. Kristen Huggins is doing for our fine arts programs. She is getting these students engaged in performances and they were able to partner with TJC to have a master works concert where Dr. Huggins was a featured singer. So our students merged with TJC students for a performance one evening and it was tremendous. And the connection comes from the leader of TJC's choir is a former Trinity Valley graduate. So this is going to be first of many joint performances. So it's good to see two rival schools come together in a, in a positive way and put on a performance like this. Shout out to John Plasic. I know this is kind of a while back, but John Plasic organized Earth Day on campus. It was a great celebration. We had some kangaroos, we had some turtles and snakes and we have events about Earth Day. I just want to give him some praise for all this hard work and all the people that helped him put on the Earth Day celebration. Of course, we want to show off some new bling. Our volleyball girls, in the last time we met, received their rings for finishing fourth in the country and also their region and district championship rings. Really, I got to give thanks to Stephanie and Brennan because they're the ones that purchased the rings. So shout out to Stephanie and Brennan for their love for the student athletes and making sure our young ladies get some bling and diamonds to represent or celebrate their success. Little quick update, we awarded our foundation scholarships about a week and a half ago. We awarded one hundred and eighty-six students an amount of $222,000. And to give you a recap of graduation, we had one hundred and twenty-one nurses being pinned. And we celebrated over eight hundred graduates and credentials that were awarded at our graduation. That puts us at forty-three thousand five hundred since 1990. So not bad. And that's the end of kind of my brief report because I know we have a long agenda so we can go to the next stage.
Thank you. Well, our next order of business, we'll welcome Judge Randy Daniel here to initiate the oath of office, our trustees from District Four, Five, and Six. Judge Daniel?
President Grant, we're here this evening to, Mr. Trustees in District Four, District Five, District Eight. So I could help, I could help those board members concentrate around here, face me, but you're the one. Right hand, say your name when I say mine. And I guess you're on duty as the officer of senior district. All right, Randy Daniel?
My pleasure, sir.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
Of the office of District?
Of the office of District Four?
Trustee of TVCC?
Trustee of TVCC?
Of the state of Texas?
The state of Texas.
Add will to the best of my ability?
Add to the best of my ability?
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Protect and defend?
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
And of this state?
And of this state?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Congratulations.
Thank you, very much.
Welcome, Ginger, Ron, Clayton. Congratulations to y'all. Glad to serve with you guys. The next order of business is to consider, discuss, and approve change order number two for Contract One, TB CJ Palestine Building, for interest engineering. Mr. Prentice, you hear that? Tell us about it.
Good afternoon, Ron. Congratulations, Ms. Timmy. Look forward to working with you. I'm here to present to you the change order that's on behalf of the air conditioning team. The change order and the reduction between Contract Five for rooftop units and the way to increase the structure of the roof and add some rooftop terrace of the units. That still has completed all of their redesign on that part. And their increased price of $131,881.97. And we are still under the original budget. Remember, we all had a value engineering bid this out. So we're still under $322,067.7 when we reduced the value engineering.
And this increase from Athens still though, we're more than, we had a lot more savings in that.
Yes, yes, we're still $300,000. And I would like to also be able to slide.
All of it?
All of it, yes, sir. As of Friday, we finished about.
Congratulations. Been a long time, haven't it? We're racing the clock. We have to have a building finished by the end of December. So it's on the Palestine campus. If you drive by, you'll see it out there being built. Any questions, Mr. Prentice? Hearing none, do we hear a motion to approve the, or are there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Trustee East and second, but you're grateful, Bill, for all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Consider the minutes of the April 22nd, 2024 Board Meeting, May 4th, 2024 Special Board Meeting, and the May 29th, 2024 Emergency Meeting. In your packet, you all were sent a copy of the minutes. Hopefully you looked it over. Do I hear a motion to, do them all at once?
Yes.
Yeah, to hear a motion to approve the minutes of those three meetings?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Motion carried, okay? Consider Business Financial Investment Report from March and April 2024, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Ford. You have good information in your package. I'm just going to over the paper and just point out some of the things, some of which we've been talking about. You'll notice on revenue, as we've been talking about tuition, the bookstore are down. The vast majority of that is due to the FAST program. Just to follow up on that, we did receive the fall reimbursement from the state, which was, I believe, a little over $506,000. And we believe, although we don't have seen it yet, we think the amount for the spring is going to be about $520,000. So we do get some of that money back, the fall number is down under other sources that, $506,000. The other things I want to point out, we talked a little bit about state appropriations. They changed, as I've said before, the way that we receive it. It's a free pay, not a ten pay. So the last 25% that's come in was June, that's another $3 million. We used to have this spread out over twelve months. And so that's why you see under state appropriations, you've got $2.8 million over last year. They bit with a grain of salt just that we got paid faster. So that's not really, we did get more money, but not quite that fast that much. And property taxes, $2.7 million, that was not unexpected. Under maintenance operations, really nothing new to report. And nothing, the big thing in there, other than normal timing of when things get paid. Interest rates are higher. I don't expect that to change anytime soon, but you see that $233,000 of reinsurance. That's what that was all about. Revenue over expense, as we sit here as of April, $17 million revenue over expense. Obviously, that's going to go down over the summer. We've received most of our funding, property taxes, tuition, all that sort of thing compared to last year, $14 million. Again, that difference is mainly due to property taxes and the faster state funding. Does anybody have any questions about that before we jump to investment report? The, slide on down to investments. One more. We got a lot of projects going on, but I just wanted to point out this, obviously, the special report is something we have to present to the board. That's the Public Funds Investment Act. We still have, even though we've got a lot of projects going on, a lot of stuff throughout the board. We still have $34 million invested in capital reserve. Eleven million still in operating. Yeah, we, a lot of that cash will, will, of course, consume. On the next page, this is your capital reserve summary and you can see some of the money there that's being spent on the Palestine, TB CJ building. I think some of the biggest expenses have not come in yet. So again, that just reconciles the $34 million to the transfers that we have. I've given you both March and April. First is the March over $25,000. And give you all a chance to look at those if anybody has any questions. Next page is April. My colleagues here, it's a right, we have it.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to through the financial report. Second by trustee Stone, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, let's see. We are now consider and discuss dates for the fiscal year 2425 Budget Workshop, Tax Hearings, and Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2425 Budget Approval. You have on your screen and in your packet, the dates that we proposed for this, Thursday, July 25th. That's the, that's the youth appraisers certified, the approved appraisers. Monday, August 12th will be the final budget workshop where we'll get together and discuss this and it's in final stage. And then Monday, the 26th, where we, at the August Board Meeting, we vote to approve the budget tax hearing rate. We vote to adapt the tax rate. Anyone having a discussion about that? Anyone like to make a motion we approve those dates? Right? So, trustee D., all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right, the next order of business is consider and discuss budget adjustments from contingency.
Before you, we have some requests to remove some money out of contingency to address some things versus our transcripts scanning. This was a project that was started several years ago and haven't been completed. This deals with all of our transcripts that are in archives. So anything before 1990 that's still in paper form, that's locked in the vault, we want to get digital. We get about six or seven requests per week that we have to go dig through the files. Those files are deteriorating. We need to get on this now because when we started this project two to three years ago, it's now gone up 100% in cost to do this. So let's get ahead of this and do it now and preserve those records. We are going to make a special recognition of Steve's transcript when we scan that thing.
It's in stone. It's going to be hard scanning that.
But we are asking to cut some money out of contingency for that. The next one is, we're doing all this work inside the West Hall. Our is new flooring, new paint, new ceiling tiles, new lottie. It's, we had in the plan for the fall to do the waterproofing. We'd like to go ahead and move that up and do it now before students move on campus so we don't have any issues where we have damaged the work that we're doing. We're getting a little nervous after all those storms that came through and created a lot of havoc. Let's go ahead and knock this project out and get the waterproofing of West Hall. And that'll allow us to do the waterproofing of South Hall in the fall budget and so forth. And the last one, last week, our AC unit in Cardinal Hall went out. It's a very expensive unit. We can patch it and patch it and replace it in a year, or we can just replace it and, and not worry about having to fight the issue of it not working. So we're requesting money out of contingency to repair the AC unit in Cardinal Hall.
Repair or replace?
Replace, sorry, replace.
Does anyone have any questions about these three items? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the three items as presented? Second by trustee East. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Are there some energy savings out of the, versus? Are there any energy savings in these new units?
Oh, compared to the older one? Well, I think, kids tell me we're dinner, just one of those.
Well, the one, we also had two go out today in another building. One, the ones that went out today was 27 years old. The other one was not quite that old. The one in part?
This one's 12 years old.
Yeah, this one's 12 years old. So obviously, as a newer unit, there are going to be some technology improvements. So it's that time of the year that.
Well, our next order of business is consider and discuss student athletic insurance. You'll, Troy, to do it.
At their own line, but I can do it for them. It's that time of the year to re-up our insurance. As you can tell, between 2023 and 2024, or 20, compared to 24 and 25, it's about a $6,000 increase. We broke it down. Inside the premium, not only do you have the premium, but you also have the consulting fee. We are moving to a zero deductible. So the premium's a little bit more, but when you factor in what we're paid, have paid for deductibles, which is currently already at $15,000 to $20,000 for the deductible, and we still have 100 outstanding claims. So in actual reality, we're probably going to see this, the premium for this year be flat. Time we pay the outstanding claims. And this, of course, you know, for our coverage of our student athletes.
Any discussion, Dr. Morrison? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Second by, first by, Dr. Watson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number 11, consider and discuss faculty contract renewal.
Before you, you have the list of faculty contracts that are for renewal. I just need a motion approval for those contracts.
Motion made, motion accepted by Dr. East, Dr. Watson, the person. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. The next item is administrative contract renewals.
Before you, you have listed the administrators that are on a contract 2025, 2425. I just need a motion approval.
Same.
Second, trustee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, thank you. All right, the next item then is consider and discuss audit engagement letter for fiscal year 2024.
I just need a motion approval. We're still within our five-year contract with our auditor and we just need a motion approval.
And they've done it, this is their, what, third or fourth year?
This year that they're going to audit will be the fifth year. We have extensions annually after that, before the design. They've got to run a good job out of this.
Now, here a motion to approve?
I like that motion.
If any do have a second, trustee D., all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, item number 14, consider and discuss policy updates as presented. In your packet, you have policy updates for our personnel in the DMA. I always, you know, we'll read the initials closely. But anyway, Dr. Mort, Dr. Dogs, would you like to discuss this?
If anybody has any questions. These recommendations were made by our legal counsel and these are for only employees who are under term contract. This does not affect anybody's law.
Do we have any questions from the, from the board on this matter? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the recommendation?
Same.
Will move, first from, second by, Dr. Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, item number 15, consider and discuss the proposal for the change of TVCC paying for long-term disability benefits to TVCC paying for short-term disability benefits for qualifying employees.
This was in discussion with our staff association and looking at this. Currently, the school provides long-term benefits. Employees do not utilize that benefits based on the length of time it takes in order to access those benefits. At that time, their employment has probably ended with the institution. So the discussion was to look at a short-term benefit. Uh, if they are approved to be on a short-term benefit, uh, this would be more available for those that do qualify to access a benefit from the college. And Dr. Dotz is here as well to answer any questions concerning that.
You actually have a kind of slide update. I wanted to let you guys know about, um, with regards to short-term. Um, and there was actually just some key points that I wanted to point out to you guys, uh, with, like, they're going through the short-term versus the long-term. So understanding that this thing benefits that each type of insurance can help you make a well-informed student. So I wanted to make sure that I went over some five points that kind of allow you to be able to be served the same too. Um, so with short-term disability insurance, they do have lower premiums compared to long-term disability insurance. This means immediate cost savings toward the institution, freeing up resources for other critical areas. Currently, under the current long-term disability plan, employees have to wait one hundred eighty days or six months before they can access this benefit. Additionally, they must be certified as totally disabled by a licensed practitioner. T V C C have never had an employee able to utilize, utilize long-term disability while still employed with college. They have either elected to continue the coverage under COBRA or through retirement benefits, and that is an expense that they must pay for. It's not paid by T V C C. So if they continue to elect that coverage outside of their employment, they can do that, and then they would be relaxed. We don't, aren't paying for it at that time. Um, under the short-term disability, the employee must wait thirty days currently. However, as of September first of twenty twenty-four, that will change to fourteen days. So what that means for our employees, if we change, if we change them over to short-term disability, if they get sick or they have an accident, or they need to access that, they don't have enough sick time to last them, even during their F N L A, which is twelve weeks. They can access this benefit and get sixty-six percent of their salary. It is income protection for them. So, um, and then under both plans, the employee must exhaust all sick leave, including any sick leave full-time before they can access the benefit. So they do have to exhaust that time. They do not have to exhaust their babies. Um, just their sick. Uh, short-term disability insurance covers temporary disabilities that prevent employees from working for a short period of time, usually three, four months. This coverage helps employees recover and return to work more swiftly, minimizing disruptions and productivity. Providing short-term disability insurance reassures employees that they are supported during short-term illness or injuries leading to improved morale and more positive work culture. By addressing and supporting short-term disabilities properly, we reduce the likelihood of these issues escalating to long-term disabilities. Early intervention through short-term disability coverage can lead to better health outcomes and lower, lower overall costs associated with the long absence. And encouraging employees to take the necessary time to recover from short-term disabilities ensures a healthier workforce in the long run, reducing the incidence and fight for more serious and long-term health problems. Short-term disability, um, insurance typically covers a broader range of conditions, including non-work-related injuries, illnesses, and even maternity. This comprehensive approach ensures that a wider, wider array of employee needs is met, fostering a supportive environment. Under the current long-term disability plan, employees can receive sixty percent of their salary capped at six thousand dollars a month. Under the short-term disability, they receive sixty-six percent of their salary, that is capped at sixty-six hundred dollars. Both plans, of course, have the offset. If the employee receives other benefits, like corporate comp or, um, social security disability, that they will offset those and still, to make sure that they still are at their max. And then a robust, uh, short-term disability insurance plan is a significant attraction for potential hires. It can be a decisive factor in employee retention. It positions our institution as the carrier, a responsible employer, and a competitive job market. So I feel like that investing in short-term disability is a strategic decision that provides immediate cost benefits, enhances employee well-being, prevents escalation to costlier long-term disabilities, and strengthens our position as an attractive employer. By prioritizing this insurance, we not only manage our financial resources more effectively, but also build a healthier, more motivated workforce. Boys will still have the option to retain their long-term disability, excuse me, long-term disability policy and can or will be payroll deducted, just like any other of our group benefit. So I do recommend that we move forward with making this change, and I welcome any questions.
I got a couple of things that just want you to clarify. The, the, as you said, the, the staff senate met together after you, your office presented this to them and discussed it and made this decision.
Yes.
Uh, secondly, if your own long-term benefit program now, uh, and you want to switch over, it's my understanding after our conversation today that that, uh, they don't have to qualify like someone new getting on the system. Is that correct for the short-term or is it?
So anybody new being hired on?
No, no, I've saw somebody that's already on.
Oh, yeah, somebody that's like on short-term, absolutely. It does not affect them in any way. We, we will take over that.
But if someone, we're going from long-term to short-term, if someone switches over, do they, are they, do they have to all be qualified under the short-term?
They will have to go through an evidence of insurance.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Means if they don't qualify, they're not insured, then they have an existing, um, illness, well, then they could not get a short-term. But for the long-term, they would have to do it out of pocket, is that correct?
Correct. But they could keep that, keep that policy in place. They don't have to, uh, elect to, uh, remove it from their benefits. They can elect to keep it. And our messaging to our employees would be that they keep that until they know for sure that they've gotten the short-term, if it's something they want to keep. Um, for some employees, like I said, I mean, if they don't want to keep it, they don't have to, they don't.
Understand that the long-term is six months away. When the policy was written, could it have been for three months instead of six months?
So we actually don't write that policy. That is given to us from, um, E R S, which is the benefits plan. So every institution in the state of Texas goes with what they provide to us. So we offer all the same benefits that any other institution does. Um, so the, the employees have the option to, um, to get them or not get them, but yeah, unfortunately, we don't have need to.
Would it be had an independent agent or it was from?
Right.
So then if you had the long-term and you had a catastrophe, you would have to wait six months, is that what you're saying? And what percent of their payroll would they get?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent. So it'd be the same thing as, I think you said sixty-six?
Yeah, so they get sixty-six percent of, and on short-term, they get sixty percent more of their salary under the short-term than for the long-term. And they only have to wait fourteen days to access the short-term benefit instead of the six months they can access.
Could you address the facts of, uh, other campuses or other colleges? I know it's not really the norm that most colleges do that because they're, we're an independent employee, and that's not something we offer and something that we have to. But I just wonder, um, what was, um, what, what are other tools that are on top?
So, um, we did do a, um, survey of that a few years ago. I didn't do one recently, but a few years ago, when we did survey other institutions about what they paid for, um, most of them paid for accidental death and dismemberment, and they paid for optional life, uh, up to the two times the employee's salary. Outside of that, it was kind of hit and miss on what they paid for, uh, but for the most part, those were the two main things that they, and plus the health, obviously, they would. Um, and that's because that's state. So, um, outside of that, institutions really don't pay for any of those extra benefits for their employees. Um, and E R S has no idea what we pay for. Um, they just offer what we can offer our employees, and then whatever we want to pay for, that is a decision that you guys make. That is solely a topic.
Do our faculty, do, uh, qualify employees, do, do they have athletic green, is there any other benefits for them?
Yes, we do have athletic, um, I believe it's cancer insurance that we offer through athletic, uh, accident, uh, we do have accidental death and dismemberment, yes, that's through E R S. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, the recommendation before us is to accept the, to move to the short-term, uh, uh, program as opposed to the long-term. Uh, any discussion on that from the board? None, do I hear a motion?
I like that motion.
Motion to approve the recommendation, seconded by trustee Stone. Uh, we've had a motion, it's in second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Doc. Uh, consider and discuss Rico equipment lease.
It's time to renew our lease for, in our print, printing department, and Joanna's here as well to answer any questions. It's a five-year lease, also includes a new piece of equipment. Um, they did vet some other products. They did not have what we utilize in our print shop. And this is the recommendation of our digital and marketing department. Move forward with this new lease.
You have questions? I will tell you that over the five years that we've had this machine, we've printed almost two point three million copies through it. Um, we, we use this machine a lot. Um, we produce a lot of, a lot of printing materials, advertising materials, classroom material, we use it a lot.
The, the cost per copy, is that consistent with what you're paying now, or is that what you consider?
It's actually slightly lower. I, I calculated what the cost was that we were paying for those two point three million copies and compared it to what we would be paying. We'll be saving about eleven hundred dollars a year, uh, at our current usage.
Anybody else have any question?
What, is this particular, um, digital press different than what we have before? Is this a new contract, not something that we've had before?
It's a new press. It's to replace the current press.
Okay.
Um, I'll let Jen, Jen Marshall Booth is our print shop manager and graphic designer extraordinaire, and she uses it on a daily basis. So I'll let her answer that.
Did you understand the question? The question was, this being a new contract for a new press, is it by the same company that we had previously?
Yes.
Okay, and then the old contract just has gone out. This is a renewal?
Yes.
Do we need great service when anything happens?
Yes, they, they will be out within a day to come get us back up and running.
And so, but we did get other companies for other.
We looked at other companies to see what they offered. There weren't any other companies that offered the features that we use the most on this particular machine. Rico, um, is the, it is the digital press, um, would you say it's the, it's the best one for the kinds of jobs that we do. They do a lot of educational. Uh, they, yeah, a lot of schools and stuff use their, colleges.
Do you use this press for reading services here at the community?
Yes, I can.
For Palmer, or anything else?
We do. We provide.
They provide the trainings on red. We're pleased with this type of
But any other questions? Thank you, ladies. Uh, we have the motion before us to accept this, uh, proposal. Uh, do I hear a motion? Trustee Day. Uh, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we have before you personnel updates.
Just asking the board to approve all personnel updates since the last board meeting. For each.
Any discussion? Your motion to approve the updates is presented.
Thank you, Dr.
Trustee, it's important, second by trustee Ethan. Uh, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Same, same sign, ayes, ayes. Uh, to bring us to this last order of business, uh, Dr. Charlie?
I'm watching that chart.
Second by trustee Day. Thank you all for being here.